We need to be more united than ever as Americans. Joe Biden is the only candidate who can bring us together to get our country moving again.
United, we can and will overcome this season of darkness in America. While I'll be a Democratic candidate, I will be an American president. That's the job of a president, to represent all of us, not just our base or our party.
Because only when we come together can we rebuild our economy the right way for working people. Biden's plan: no tax increases if you make under $400,000. Create 18 million new jobs, higher wages, with ideas both parties can support.
This is not a partisan moment. This must be an American moment. I'm Joe Biden, candidate for president, and I approve this message.
Paid for by Biden for President.
Your vote is your power. It's just that simple. Your vote is how you say you stand for something. It's how you say you count, you matter, and you are a part of choosing the direction of this country. And the time to make your voice, your vote, and your power heard has never been more important than it is today. So Pennsylvania, whether you vote by mail or vote on Election Day, vote by November 3rd. Vote.org is responsible for the content of this advertisement.
I'm Tahisha Wei, New Jersey's Secretary of State. Here to speak to you about the November general election. For 2020, all active registered voters in New Jersey will automatically receive their ballots in the mail. Remember to vote, sign, seal, and return it at the post office, in a secure ballot drop box, at your county board of elections office, or at your polling place. Safe, simple, secure. Vote by 8:00 PM November 3rd. Learn more at vote nj.gov.
Can you pass this on?
No.
It's cold?
Well, everything's cold in here. If you can't warm me up, I'll call someone who can.
What?
Who can keep your wife warm this winter? Cans can. With a new train heating and cooling system, Marvin E. Cans is the mainline's oldest HVAC company and a train comfort specialist. Right now through November 15th, Cans can get you up to $2,850 in rebates or special financing on a new heating and cooling system. Visit MarvinEcans.com. It's hard to stop a train. See your independent dealer for complete program eligibility, dates, details, and restrictions. Subject to credit approval.
WMGK Philadelphia and WMGK HD Digital One, a Beasley Media Group station.
Minniki is committed to keeping you safe and on the road. Head to your locally owned Minniki for all your auto repair needs. Right now, get 50% off brake pads and shoes. Minniki for tires, brakes, batteries, exhaust systems, and more. Minniki, doing car care right.
His Majesty's Cumberland Farms coffee's arrived at Turkey Hill. It's only 99 cents, hot or iced.
You hear that? The Royal Coffee is now available to all of us.
Cumberland Farms Farmhouse Blend Coffee, now at Turkey Hill Convenience Stores for 99 cents for a small, medium, or large, plus applicable tax.
Take advantage of 0% financing and no money down every day at Dell Toyota. DellToyota.com.
Jack, selling for less.
Now, another long block of back-to-back rock from Philadelphia's classic rock authority. 102.9 MGK. Now, Classic Rock 102.9 presents the greatest of all time. As voted by you, here's Andre Gardner and Tony Harris.
Well, of course, Tony, you knew Queen was going to be a representative. But like I said earlier, I played "You're My Best Friend" like around...
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Newtown Township Board of Supervisor, actually work session meeting, but also the budget presentation. What this is, is a presentation by our manager of the upcoming 2021 budget. It's not an approval of a budget. It's not even an official budget. It is just a presentation of the budget. So if anyone has seen this budget ahead of time and has been scared by any kind of wording that they may have heard, they need not worry right at this moment because we are not passing a budget. We are not even analyzing this budget. We're just having a presentation. Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Chairman. Distributed to you last week was the manager's budget with the synopsis included in the beginning. My intent is to run through this, and then I have all of our department heads here. For those of you who have not been through this before, if there's any specific questions you would like to ask of them. First of all, I would like to thank all the department heads and staff that have helped put the proposed budget into its final version. Budgeting process is a tedious process, and the level of detail that has been provided by staff is genuinely appreciated. As far as the 2020 overview goes, wish it was much better than this, but 2020 was an unprecedented, has been an unprecedented year filled with the unexpected. What seemed to start off as a normal year quickly changed into one of the most historic and life-altering years in modern history. In early March, COVID-19 began to impact the residents of Newtown Township. Township's response to COVID-19 was to move forward in the face of adversity. We made difficult decisions to offset the potential loss in revenue, cut costs, reduced expenditures, and suspended hiring. We managed to work alongside each other to accomplish tasks and complete goals. Our police and fire departments continue to operate in the face of the virus, responding to calls for help and ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Our Public Works Department amended their shifts as they continued to operate and maintain our infrastructure. Our administrative staff, finance, codes, and park and recreation staff continued to operate under constantly changing conditions to provide essential services to the residents of the township. All of these accomplishments could not be achieved by myself alone. And I want to thank each and every one of my coworkers for their dedication during these unprecedented times. In the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, the unfortunate and untimely death of Mr. George Floyd impacted the nation with emotional response and civil unrest. And the weeks and months that followed placed unprecedented stresses upon the relationship between law enforcement officers and the communities they serve. In an effort to heal those scars, Newtown Township Police Department, led by Chief Hearn, responded by attending candlelight vigils and ensuring the safety of peaceful protesters within the township and hosting the first-ever Town Hall Open House Meeting, where members of the community could speak openly and honestly with the department. When the situation surrounding COVID-19 finally recedes, our officers plan to continue the community outreach programs they have come to enjoy, such as Coffee with a Cop, Shop with a Cop, visiting and reading stories to elementary school children, and the day-to-day personal interaction with the community. The 2020 budget and over half the capital expenditures outlined in the budget, including a million-dollar road paving program, were also a victim of COVID-19. Staff has diligently worked to reduce line item costs, eliminate any spending not specifically associated with the operation, and suspended the hiring of both part-time and full-time employees. The real estate millage associated with the 2020 road program was reallocated to the General Fund in an attempt to offset potential revenue losses from the economic shutdown caused by the COVID-19 virus. The 2020 budget was adopted in late 2019 without any tax increases as the township had engaged EconSol Solutions Incorporated to perform a five-year financial and management study to assist with the plan for the future of the township operations. The result of that study highlighted the volatile nature of the current earned income tax-based funding structure of the Township General Fund. In the past, this funding structure has been advantageous to the township as it allowed real estate taxes to remain low when compared to other towns with comparable services. The 2020 budget did not allocate real estate millage to the General Fund to cover operational expenses. In the midst of the pandemic, earned income tax revenues fell far below projected values in the months of March, April, and May, contributing to the lowest General Fund balance recorded. Since then, earned income taxes have fortunately rebounded and through September have been historically higher than in previous years, likely caused by high-wage earners working out of their houses instead of elsewhere. There's no guarantee that this trend will continue, and quite honestly, we're sort of hoping it doesn't so that everybody gets back to some sort of normalcy here in the future. Generally, over the past three years, the township's earned income tax has fluctuated and remains stagnant. As costs for services, equipment, materials, supplies, contractors, and general personnel continue to increase, it is evident that it is necessary to supplement the existing General Fund revenue with additional real estate tax revenue. We've made significant capital purchases... I'm sorry. Let me back up here a minute. Despite the hardships and strains 2020 has put on the township's operation, some notable achievements have been accomplished by our dedicated staff. We've made significant capital purchases in all departments. We purchased a major piece of equipment for Public Works, replaced the emergency service department quick-response vehicle, replaced three police vehicles, and obtained a milling machine for more permanent pothole repair from liquid fuels funds. We paid down short-term financing obligations and approved the police department's collective bargaining agreement. We've paved several miles of roads using only state aid funding, and we've learned to use Zoom. These accomplishments could not have been possible without the cooperation and assistance of our staff, our trusted consultants, and the Board of Supervisors. I would like to personally thank everyone for their hard work and their contributions this past year. The 2021 budget being presented is developed with the intent to advance the operation and the level of services that the community has come to desire and to expect. As previously mentioned, the township contracted with EconSol Solutions Incorporated to develop a five-year financial plan. This plan highlights the need for additional staffing as well as the need for a real estate tax base to support the General Operating Fund. The impacts of COVID-19 not only affected the 2020 operation and budget, but it will impact the 2021 budget and years moving forward as funds that were not expended in 2020 for training, capital purchases, general expenditures, et cetera, will need to be allocated in 2021 and years beyond to resolve the deficiency caused by the pandemic. The five-year financial plan has been used as a guide in the preparation of the 2021 manager's budget, and it incorporates the recommendations of the consultant. 2021 budget incorporates a seven-and-a-half mil increase in revenue to be dedicated to the General Operating Fund for a total rate of eight-and-a-half mils. The seven-and-a-half mil increases in accordance with the township's five-year financial plan. The fund pays for the operation of the township personnel, capital purchases, and insurances, among other things. The eight-and-a-half mil tax increase to the General Fund will cost an owner of a residence with a value of $400,000 approximately $374 a year. $31.68 per month, or about $1.03 per day. In 2020, the township redirected one mil of real estate to the General Fund from the Debt Service Fund. This millage was associated to paying down a $1 million anticipated road loan that was subsequently canceled due to COVID-19. We've retained the millage rate in the General Fund and allocated the equivalent figure, $350,000, toward additional road paving in 2021 and anticipate continuing this allocation in future years to expand the roadway maintenance program. Our final numbers in 2019 for earned income tax collection ended the year with a General Fund balance of $2,147,319 versus the projected $2,384,414. This was caused in part by a lower-than-projected earned income tax revenue collection. As with previous years, the earned income tax continues to be the predominant revenue source in our budget. We have estimated a combined year-end total of $7,291,850 for earned income taxes. We have set the combined earned income tax rate for 2021 to $6,750,000. Delinquent EIT is set at a year-end estimate amount of $205,000. This is a very unpredictable amount and can vary widely from year to year. We have conservatively set our 2021 estimated delinquent resident EIT to $125,000 for next year. Real estate transfer taxes have decreased drastically over the past few years. This figure and its impact on the budget is consistent with the volatile nature of revenue in the budget. Factors beyond our control can affect the decline in real estate transfer taxes, such as diminishing supply, rising costs, increased interest rates, demand, and many other things. We have retained the budgeted real estate transfer tax revenue of $750,000 for 2021. Township's Park and Recreation revenues were hit hardest by the effects of COVID-19. The historic gains realized in the first few months of the year were quickly erased as summer camps and recreation classes were canceled. Programs ground to a halt. The department has worked diligently to develop and offer classes and programs that follow the constantly changing health guidelines. Our total collections from Park and Recreation program are estimated to reach approximately $225,000, where the year-end total in 2019 was $586,189. We have conservatively set the 2021 revenues at $350,000. The total budgeted revenue for 2021 is $14,110,664. As far as staffing goes, current staffing levels are as follows. The township has a police department of 26 full-time officers with a chief and one lieutenant. The police department also has administrative support staff of four for a total of 32 and has a total coverage area of 22 square miles, including Wrightstown Township. Public Works Department has a full-time staff of seven laborers, one custodian, one crew leader, and a director. The department has an administrative assistant who is a full-time employee that splits her time with the emergency services department. The emergency services department has a full-time staff of eight firefighters and a chief for a staff of nine. The recreation department has a full-time staff that includes a secretary, two administrative assistants for a staff of three, and the current director is out on long-term disability. The codes department has a full-time staff of two administrative assistants. Finance department has a full-time staff of two accountants and a finance director for a staff of three. Township has one full-time administrative assistant focusing on technology. Township has an administrative assistant to the township manager, and of course, myself, the township manager. This brings the total active full-time staff to 64 employees. Township also has two part-time recording secretaries and a crossing guard. Typically, the township employs multiple seasonal Public Works and Recreation camp employees. However, due to COVID-19, those positions were suspended in 2020. It is anticipated that seasonal employees will be restored in 2021. As far as next year's salaries and healthcare, 2021 salaries include 3% raises for police per the collective bargaining agreement, 3% raises for CWA non-uniform and CWA fire-paid personnel per the collective bargaining agreements, 3% raises for exempt personnel. Also in accordance with the EconSol Solutions study, the 2021 budget also contemplates a restructuring of salaries for several administrative positions. The budget proposes setting the township manager's salary to $140,000. The administrative assistant to the township manager's salary at $75,000. The public works director's salary to $100,000, and the fire chief's salary to $108,000, which is paid through the Fire Protection Fund, thereby further establishing a responsibility-based salary tier system and a comparative salary benchmark with other municipalities. 2021 budget contemplates the establishment of several new positions in accordance with the five-year financial study, which include the re-establishment of Assistant Township Manager position, establishment of a full-time Director of Codes and Zoning, addition of three new police officers, and promotions within the supervisory ranks of the police department. Start dates for the majority of these new positions are anticipated in the summer of 2021 as real estate tax millage that is anticipated to support the General Fund will not be collected until the end of May. As far as capital purchases included in the manager's budget, for police, there's three patrol vehicles, four portable radios, seven ballistic vests, and 12 tasers. Total recommended new police capital spending is $222,800. For Public Works, recommending the purchase of a new international dump truck for snow removal and road repair and a Ford F-350 utility body for just general repairs around the township. Those two items would be financed short-term over a three-year period. We're also proposing to purchase a new zero-turn ride-on mower as well as a walk-behind mower, which would be used for lawn maintenance in the parks. So the total new Public Works capital spending is $58,323. As far as technology goes, computers and technology upgrades, we had allocated $15,000. New server and new AMS server, which is our financial software, at $12,000, and upgrades to the AV system so we can continue to broadcast live at $7,500. Recommended new technology capital spending is $34,500. For building and facilities, minor police building renovation at $25,000. Police building study, which would be a sort of a broad-stroke look at our facility to see how down the road we could either reuse or renew or build new a new police facility. So we had $20,000 allocated for that study. Police HVAC replacements for air handlers that continuously fail, $15,000, and $10,000 for MS4 projects, which are the meadows and the stream bank stabilization. That was approved as part of the MS4 project. Recommended spending for buildings and facilities is $70,000. Parks and Recreation, all these are paid by the Rec Capital Fund, which is funds contributed by developers as part of a development. We have $5,000 for tree removals and planting at Clark Nature Center, replacement of the backstop fencing at Field Six at Helen Randall, $20,000. Engineering for Lower Dolington Trail extensions at $50,000, and then the actual construction for that trail of $922,000, a portion of which is paid by grant contributions. Total new park and recreation spending is $997,000 combined. The total capital expenditures transfers from the General Fund for 2021, including existing equipment and financing, is $625,561. The total budgeted expenditures equate to $13,945,456, which gives a year-end 2021 fund balance forward of $2,000,272,908. The percentage of the budgeted expenditures is at 14.875%. As far as the dedicated funds go, we have the Fire Fund. We had budgeted $160,000 towards the NFA for their operating expenses for 2021. The Fire Fund tax millage has been adjusted to 1%875 to compensate for the increased expenditures for the fire chief's salary and benefits while continuing to allocate funding for the NFA, Newtown Fire Association. Highway Aid Fund, specifically related to road paving, total revenues in the Highway Aid Fund are anticipated to be $725,502, with the $536,000 liquid fuels contribution from the state. The fund pays for winter maintenance, operating supplies, paving, rock salt, and some engineering costs associated with the road program. As previously stated, the 2021 budget contemplates maintaining the allocation of approximately one mil of real estate tax that will be dedicated to the road paving each year in the General Fund. This equates to an additional $350,000 in paving each year. A total of 12 roads are proposed to be repaved in the base bid that will encompass approximately three miles of road paving at an estimated cost of $758,033, not including the alternate bids. The proposed roads include the following. Jeff, would you please pull up the slide with the roads that's listed on it? We have Sentinel Ave, Quaker Drive, Colonial Drive, Cypress Place, Penswood Drive, Commonwealth Drive, Sebelius Court, Cypress Place, a portion...
We don't have those up on the monitor.
Jeff, are you able to pull those up? All right, so we're not able to show the slides as of right now, but I'll just read them out again. So it's Sentinel Avenue, Quaker Drive, Colonial Drive, Penswood Drive, Commonwealth Drive, Sebelius Court, Cypress Place, John Quill Drive, a portion of Cypress Place as well, Linden Ave, Sterling Street, Norwood Ave, a portion of it, and a portion of Grant Street. A number of additional roads will be included as alternate bids, provided that favorable pricing is received. As anticipated, that we'll pave approximately up to four miles of road, plus or minus, in 2021. With 71.3 miles of road and an average 20-year life, the township would need to pave 3.56 miles of road per year to repave every road every 20 years. Rescue Squad Fund, the 2021 budget proposes a .5 mil from .45 real estate tax increase to the Rescue Squad Fund at the request of the ambulance squad chief for a total millage of .5. Fire hydrant fund that pays for the fees associated with all the fire hydrants in the township. Fire hydrant millage has been adjusted to compensate for the rate increase imposed in late 2019 by the Newtown Artesian Water Company. The proposed budget proposes a .065 mil increase to offset the hydrant rate increase for a total millage rate of .615. The Debt Service Fund is, as you're all aware, we refunded our 2012 bond and refinanced the remaining 17 years with a fixed-rate loan of 2.51 with TD Bank. The 2021 payment equates to $674,240. Refinancing has allowed the township to proceed several years without having to contemplate a millage adjustment to the Debt Service Fund. In 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the township relocated the one mil associated with the road loan to the General Fund to offset the loss in revenue and declined to pursue the new road loan. The millage allocated to the Debt Service Fund actually decreases from 2.625 to 1.875 for 2021 to cover the cost of the building loan payment only. Jeff, are we able to pull up? Okay, he has it. So this is a chart depicting millage rates and estimated annual revenues for nearby towns with an EIT for a residential dwelling with a value of about $400,000. Newtown Township's 2021 total combined tax millage is 12.49 mils. So you can see where Newtown Township at the top in the lighter blue is shown there with the 12.49 millage would equate to about $549.56. And you can also see what the school district is getting, which is 126.301 mils, equating to approximately $5,557.24 for a home with about a $400,000 value. So in comparison, you can see that Plumstead Township has a 14.94 mils. They're generating approximately $651.38 for a $400,000 house in that township. And the level of services that Newtown Township provides with the paid fire department, the recreation staff that we have, et cetera. the recreation staff that we have, et cetera, um, far exceeds that, that of the operation in Plumstead. So there's a, a comparison of, of, uh, some figures. Also important to note is Doylestown Township last year imposed, uh, a real estate tax increase to offset expenditures. As far as timing and adoption of the 2021 budget, preliminary budget needs to be advertised for a minimum of 20 days before it can be adopted by the board. It is recommended that the following schedule be considered for adoption. Uh, adopt the preliminary 2021 budget on November 10th, that's a Tuesday meeting, and adopt the final 2021 budget December 9th of, of this year. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I guess the board will ask some questions if, if everyone has some. And why don't we start in the manner of Mr. Davis, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Mack, and Mr. Oxley, and since you guys will ask all the questions, I won't have anything to ask them. So, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, this is a unique opportunity with all the department heads here. I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work you continue to do, especially under these circumstances this year with the, the COVID pandemic. So, thank you. It is appreciated, and you as well, Micah. I think I've expressed that before, but never in person, ever once, so. Obviously, the, the, the tax increase is a little troubling, a little stressful. No one ever wants to do that. On the flip side of that, there's a lot of things, good things in that budget that, uh, I think are necessary. At this time, I don't have any specific questions about it. I think I still need a little more, uh, analysis of it. It's, it's a little, little few pages there. But, uh, I, I think, um, you know, we have tough choices to make. I think, uh, we're gonna have to do that this year. That's really all I have this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
I have a couple of questions that are related to the millage, and I, I think maybe I can even ask three of them at once, and you can answer them as we go, and I'll make sure you answer. But, um, I, I know I've been confused about how the millage situation works, it assesss value and, um, market value and things like that. I mean, I think I've got it now, but, uh, I'm sure lots of other people have questions about how that's done. So I just wondered if you could explain how, how the millage works in terms of that assessed value versus market value. And then the two related questions were, what does one mil increase mean to a homeowner? What would, how would that affect them? And then how does a one mil increase affect the overall township budget? And I think a couple of those answers were in there, but it's worth repeating.
Right. Well, the, your, the first part of your question, uh, about the, the assessed value versus market, true market value, true market value is what you can sell your house for. So, uh, in the examples that I had used, uh, that house that we were discussing, discussing was a value of $400,000. Now, uh, the, the average assessed value for Bucks County is 38,500 roughly, plus or minus. Don't quote me on that exactly, but it's, it's, it's in and around.
And it varies.
Right. It varies, and it varies between each individual resident. So, uh, what we had used for the calculations that you saw on that slide was a $40,000 assessed value for a $400,000 house. So, um, but the, the true market value, the, the market value is what you can get for your house if you were to put a for sale sign on it today. How does a mil impact an individual homeowner? That all sort of depends on your, your assessed value of, of your property. The example I had given was the total millage to the general fund, um, of eight and a half mils uh, over the course of a year is $374 a year, $31.68 per month, or a dollar three per day, and that is for the same $400,000, uh, house. Um, and I think.
And that's for the eight, the eight mils.
And that's for eight and a half. So if you divide a dollar three by eight.
I kept coming out with somewhere between.
Right.
$37 and $45.
So, I mean, it, it varies. I mean, it, it all, all hinges upon the, um, the assessed value of, of each individual property. And how does one mil impact the township budget? One mil equates to about $350,000 in Newtown Township this year. Now that, that changes because it has to do with the total, um, analysis of, of all properties in the township, and the county distributes those figures every quarter.
Okay.
So that, that could, and it's been on a, it's been on a good trend. It's been going up. It hasn't been receding, so.
When I was doing my math, I was using 7,000 just as a round number.
Right.
Of households. And it's not too far off.
Right.
Okay. Then, of course, we're raising the general fund by eight mils.
That's the proposed, correct.
Proposed budget. What do we get for that increase?
Well, you, you, I guess the blanket statement is you get, um, more services and more, uh, response time, both from, um, the police department and as well as the codes and zoning department and from our department administration.
Right.
As of, as of right now, you know, I'll be the first to admit, it's, it's a delay getting back to people because we just don't have the staff to handle the amount of inquiries we have here, which tends to be frustrating for some people, but we try to explain. As far as, uh, the police department goes, Chief Hearn can speak to more specifics on that, but I mean, it's, it's, it's indicated in, in the seven, or the five year financial study that we have a deficiency in response time. So, um, obviously, if there's an emergency and you pick up that phone and you dial 911, you expect somebody to, to be there. So we'd be maintaining that level of expectation.
Might want that to be single digit minutes.
You and me both, or less.
Yes. And I, I would dare say that this budget would have a good positive impact on our bond rating and.
Well, absolutely. I mean, it, it shows, it shows Moody's and, and the folks at Moody's that the township is, is willing to uphold its end of the, end of the deal on any loans and obligations that we were to, we currently have or, or would get in the future.
And because it's a five year plan, we're be able, we're being able to project out a few years.
Right.
And take that into account as well.
Mm-hmm.
Let me see. Before I yield, I would, I would want to make sure that I, uh, thank the staff for all the hard work over, over the years, and I've interacted with many of you. So, uh, it's, it's always, always been a pleasure to ask for help and get an answer. Thanks.
And I appreciate it.
Mr. Mack.
Thank you for that presentation. A lot of details in here, and I spent a lot of time today looking over the numbers. You know, I'm kind of interested in numbers, and I wanted to go back to the tax millage table where you're saying the total, uh, millage for Newtown, if this budget were passed, would be 12.49.
Correct.
Currently, it's 7.5.
Currently, it's four and a half.
Four, 4.5, correct.
Correct.
So the difference between that number is 7.99.
Right.
But I don't see how you get that 7.99. Can you? Because when I add up all the little changes like the point one two five for the, uh, chief, uh, fire chief, point oh five, uh, increase in, um, something else, point oh six five, I get a number more like 7.74 increase, which is less than 7.99. So, can you tell me how you got 7.99 as an increase?
I can tell, I, I can tell you how we came up with 12 and a half. So.
12.46.
12.49, right.
I mean, it's money.
So, so it's eight and a half mils to the general fund. If you look at Schedule A, the bottom line on Schedule A, it spells out the real estate millage associated with each fund. So it's eight and a half. Uh, then there's one to the fire tax, 1.875 to the debt service fund, a half to the rescue squad fund, and then point six one five to the fire hydrant fund. So total, between all those funds and the general fund is, is 12.49.
All right, I'll do the math. So, let's just talk about the fire fund. I mean, um, wasn't it 175,000 to be, uh, for the Newtown Fire Association?
This year, correct.
And you're proposing.
160.
Going to 160 and giving the chief a, a pay raise.
Correct. The chief is also anticipated, um, to be requested to be the chief of the NFA as well.
Okay, how does that happen?
They, they need to do a bylaw change, uh, and for that to happen, it will need to be approved by the board. So that, that's, it's coming. It's just not in a position to be brought to the board just yet.
Okay, um, you mentioned, um, that this would increase services, and you focus specifically on the police department. And, uh, I would like to focus on the road repairs. And you mentioned a number of four miles every year. It's actually 3.56 or something like that.
Correct.
My calculations, but doing that amount is only going to, uh, be maintaining the status quo of the condition of our roads as they are now. And that's the number one complaint of citizens is the condition of our roads. It's over 70% of the respondents said that's the one thing they would like to see improvement in. And so I'm curious as to the personnel, for example, in the public works department, and maybe I can talk to, uh, ask some questions of the director, seems to be understaffed, uh, and you've told me that on a number of times, a number of times. So if you really want to improve the services to the township, why aren't we doing more to improve the public works department and increase road repairs and other things that the public works department does?
Well, this, that's really two part question. So I'll, I'll address the first one first with the, with the, as far as the roads go. The intent every year, now, keep in mind that the number of, the, the amount of money we get in liquid fuels funds to pave roads varies every year depending on the price of fuel. So the number of 536,000 that we're getting next year from this year's liquid fuel bank, I should say, is significantly less than we got the year before. In 2019, I believe we ended up with $612,000 from the state. So that's, you know, an 80, uh, $70,000 difference. So if, if we were to go back up to that $611,000 mark, plus you have that $350,000 allocated towards additional paving, you're looking at roughly 900,000 to a million dollar program each year. With the program that is in the books right now, with that 536,000 plus the 350,000, we're looking at roughly an $886,000, uh, road program. And the, the roads that I had read off, um, are just part of the base bid. We, every year, we, we bid a number of alternates to hopefully bring that number up above four miles a year. And it all, it all depends on, on the pricing. If we see that it's favorable pricing, we'll recommend that we pave these roads this year. If for some reason fuel goes, uh, diesel fuel goes through the roof and the, and the prices come back like, uh, elevated, then we're, our recommendation is let's just sort of back off this year, and we'll, we'll save this money for next year and put it towards that program. So I think the intent, uh, rather than continuing down the path where we, we take a loan out and we pay interest on that loan over, over the three years for the million dollar program one year, would be to do a more consistent program each year of four miles, four miles, four and a half miles, five mile, whatever we can, we can, can work out over, over the, the cycle. So, um, and as, as the, the township's, um, assessed value increases, that $350,000 will also increase. So, you know, you can see over time how that number will end up, will, will increase, and at the same time, we don't have to pay the interest. The second part of your question was more about personnel. Our intent next year is to go back to quote unquote normal, where we bring back all of the part-time staff. Uh, we hire additional part-time staff to do the maintenance in the parks, which our full-time guys are doing right now. With the pandemic and, and the, and the fear of a major crash in revenues because of loss in EIT, we scaled back and we didn't bring in any part-time public works employees this season. All that's out the window next year. I'd like to bring back all of those part-timers to strictly maintain those parks, maintain the bathrooms, maintain all the facilities in those parks, and then put our public works guys back out on the road where they should be, doing inlet repair in advance of, of any, uh, yearly road program.
Well, with all due respect, I have to say that you've maintained that the department was understaffed way before COVID-19.
And, and it is. I don't disagree with that.
So, uh, you know, we can't blame everything on COVID-19.
Right.
Please. But in any case, you're gonna, you say you're gonna put $350,000 dedicated in the general fund, but that is not really dedicated. You could use, am I incorrect in saying that you can take any money from the general fund and use it any way you want? Basically, no matter how you budget it?
It would require a motion by the board, but that is technically correct, yes.
It would require a motion by the board.
If we were to allocate that line item to a different area, it would, it would be required to be approved by the board.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I think I have a lot more questions, but I'll have to look over this more carefully. But we've received a lot of comments from people, residents who are, I think, older, retired, on a fixed income. And there's a lot of concern about paying these, uh, extra fees. Do we ever do anything like have a discount for senior citizens, for example?
For, like.
For real estate taxes, the millage rate?
No.
That's impossible to do?
I honestly, I don't know. That's a legal question?
Uh, we don't have a lawyer here, sorry.
There's no Dave. But I, I get what you're saying, and, and the intent would be this year, the intent is to focus on our police department because health, health and safety of the public is, is paramount, in my opinion. Next year, it may be the fire department that we need to focus on, or it may be the public works department where we need to expand staffing, and we can incorporate those numbers into the budget as well.
Well, yeah, I understand that the police department could use more, uh, officers. The, you're saying you're using, you're following the recommendations of the consultants, but I believe in scenario two and scenario three, and you seem to be copying scenario two mostly, it was recommended that only one police off, new police officer be hired in 2021 and two in 2022. Isn't it, isn't it conceivable that we can spread this out? Because also I'm getting a lot of complaints from residents, for example, that this is probably the worst time to increase, uh, taxes on people. And I will blame COVID-19 this time because there are people who have been furloughed from work and so on. So it doesn't send a really good signal to the residents. But, um, the, also the criticism from another resident was about how many supervisors versus patrolmen. I mean, I'm assuming the patrolmen do most of the work, supervisors tell them what to do. I'm not an expert in police matters, but I think the consultants also recommended things like, uh, decreasing the amount of overtime pay. Any of that in this, um, plan?
Well, naturally, with the more, more staffing you have available to you, the less overtime you're gonna have to back, pay to backfill shifts. I, I realize that what was in the report for the, the police department and, um, we were supposed to bring on another officer this year. We, we put that off because of, again, COVID.
That's legitimate.
Right. So we're, so now we're, you know, we're pushing that into next year. And at the same time, you know, we have the reports that say that, you know, the, the deficiency that's outlined in the five year financial study, we're trying to alleviate. We're trying to alleviate that. We have several officers that are, that are approaching retirement, and we're trying to be proactive in, in replacing those officers and moving the department forward in a progressive manner.
Are the, most of those officers that are retiring, are they higher than, they're just, they're like sergeants or whatever?
Well
Supervisor level?
Generally speaking?
Okay. Regarding the emergency services department, fire department, the consultants also recommended hiring five new firefighters, career firefighters to handle the weekends, and that, I don't see that in this plan. Is something changed with that?
The, the recommendation from the consultant was to hire those five firefighters contingent upon the township receiving the safer grant. As, as the time that this was put together, we didn't get, we didn't get anything from the safer grant as of, so far. So I don't know, Glenn, did you hear anything else on that or?
We were notified today, but we did not receive the word of the city.
So does that mean you'll have to reapply for a grant next year?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I'll let other people get a chance, thank you.
Mr. Oxley.
Mr. Lewis, how you doing, buddy?
Sir, how are you?
Good, thank you for sitting up there and actually providing us with this detailed report. I want to thank everyone that works for our great township, especially during these times. I know it's been quite stressful and we've had to work with limited staffing and the stress of the pandemic and what can do to our families, so I want to thank you all for your time, especially being here tonight, first off. Mr. Lewis, I wanted to ask you, when you talk assessed value, and you say four hundred thousand dollars, the assessed value is, that is mandated by the county, correct?
That, that is, yes, the county puts out the assessed value for your resident, residents.
And the assessed value would be based upon what year?
Typically, I believe it's the year your residence was constructed.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure how they figured that out, that's all with the Bucks County Board of Assessment.
So basically, just so we know the assessed value piece of it, so my house was built in like nineteen, I think it was ninety-two or something like that. Whatever the value was at that time, that would be the millage rate upon that, correct?
Theoretically, if it didn't increase, if the county didn't put a increasing factor on it.
Now, now, what has the county done that to? I'd have to check that for my own personal stuff, okay. All right, very good. So back to the assessed value on the four hundred thousand dollars and three seventy-four per year, thirty-one, sixty-eight per month or a dollar, three per day. So essentially, on that four hundred thousand dollar value, it'd be, I guess, less than a cup of Starbucks coffee, essentially.
Far less.
Okay, all right. And I think that those Starbucks lines are pretty, pretty long in Newtown, right?
It is long, and it backs out on the Eagle Road. And let's just, let's just be clear that that, that calculation was based on, for the eight and a half mills to remain in the general fund.
Okay, thank you. I have another question in regards to recreation department. It says, has a full-time staff that includes a secretary, two administrative assistants, for a staff of three directors absent on long-term leave. Who is handling the director's role while they are on leave?
Unfortunately for them, I am.
You're doing that?
Yeah.
So you're, all right, so you're doing your job here, running our township along with another department head's job because they're out on leave, out of, based upon, out of your control or theirs, obviously?
And I'm the code and zoning officer as well, so.
What's that?
And I'm the coding, codes and zoning officer as well, so.
Okay, so, all right, how many jobs do you do here, so I'm clear?
Well, I'm the secretary, I'm the treasurer, I'm the open records officer, I'm the manager, assistant manager, parking rec director, zoning and code enforcement officer, so a bunch.
Wait, hold on, do, do we all know that he does all this stuff? Oh, wow, okay. And he still picks up the phone, thank you, all right. So do we, do we anticipate any time where, once we get back in the recreation department, you'll still have to handle that in, like, say if we are out of COVID and there's a vaccine, you know, and in the summertime when we're putting all these programs together and so forth, are you gonna be handling that still?
The intent, and my fingers are crossed, the current parking rec director can return to duty after, after leave.
Okay.
If that's not the case, my intent is fully to move forward with the hiring of a replacement position for that department. It's a, it's a grave injustice for me to be running their department with the amount of revenue that they bring in on a normal year, not on a COVID year, but I, I just don't have the time or the, or the, the resources to allocate the necessary time to that department.
How much revenue did they bring in the recreation department in twenty nineteen, the summer, I guess, or all year?
Five hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
And eighty-one dollars?
One hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Okay, now, in, and I'm sorry, I didn't look at this yet, right now, so far, before the end of the year, where are we at for recreation?
We projected the year end at two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
On the revenues, correct.
Okay. So once we get back up to, you know, full staff and out of COVID, we'll have more revenue from there to add to?
Right, I mean, the big thing that killed the revenue in park and recreation was the cancellation of the summer camp. You know, we had to refund that money, and it's, it's a, it's a very popular program here, so.
Okay. So, Mr. Lewis, I'm gonna move on from that just really quick because I have a question in regards to E-Consult's suggestion about economic development and the recommendations. And based upon our economic, economic development strategy on our committee side, based upon what we're trying to do, if we can earn a very nice amount of earned income tax down the road in the future, probably three, four years out, could you foresee that this potential, not saying that we're gonna vote for it or not, I'm just saying, the recommendation of twelve point four nine, would you consider that as an opportunity that if we have better EIT down the road, that we could reduce that for the residents? Because I know Mr. Max got a concern about some residents with fixed income and so forth, but we also know that we are down on revenues tremendously in this township in many ways. So down the road, is that something that we could potentially do?
I wish I had a crystal ball, but if we get another Lockheed Martin in here, I would foresee that, you know, after some analysis and some, some actuarial calculations, I don't think there's any, any doubt that we could consider reducing the rate in the future.
Okay. Well, thank you. Like Mr. Davis said, this is a very detailed report, and I look forward to digging into a little bit more, and I'm sure we'll be having some deliberations about it, but thank you very much, appreciate you being here.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. I've been through these a few times. And I know the hard work that the administration puts in, the department heads, and I appreciate everything you guys do. It's far more than a labor of love, and I use that term loosely. I'd like to go to the two thousand twenty-one millage chart, where we have all the different townships. Now, the other thing to take into consideration is that some of these townships do not have a full-time fire department, is that correct?
That's correct.
So comparing apples to apples, who are we comparing ourselves to?
Northampton.
Okay, which is higher?
Which is higher. Warrington, which is higher. I would say War Works are a pretty close match, they don't, I don't believe they have a paid fire department.
Glenn, do they?
No, they don't.
Okay. Now, and now going to the, the cost, the revenue, five hundred and for the sake of numbers, fifty dollars, I know some will say that's not accurate. But for five hundred and fifty dollars, the residents of this township are getting police protection, fire protection, public works, the roads taken care of, and when up and running, a viable park and recs department. Now, I'm just gonna use myself as an example. To my homeowners association, I pay two hundred dollars a month, and I gladly pay it because I get services for that. Now, we all live in developments, and I don't know how much we pay, but I'm sure if we're paying five hundred, maybe a year, we're not, our, our development's not giving us police protection, fire protection, even paving our roads. So the bang for your, bang for the buck seems to be very substantial with, I know what I'm paying, which is twenty-four hundred dollars a year, as opposed to five hundred and fifty dollars a year for that, for that increase. Then I have to look at the school millage, which they just raise that every year. And they're getting five thousand, almost five thousand six hundred in that revenue that they're getting from the township residents. So, I mean, I just want to clarify that all these numbers are not apples to apples. There's only a few of them that we can compare ourselves to, and even in comparison to that, we're lower. Now, the other thing I wanna, you know, every budget has a history. And I just want to go to the road paving. It's always been a pet peeve of mine because I remember back, way back when, where the only money we had to do, to have with road paving was the liquid fuels fund, of which at that time, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would only pave a total of maybe one mile and not a continuous mile. It would be a little patch here, a little patch there, a little patch here and there. So our road program is far superior than it's ever been in the past. And paving four to five miles of road, to me, is something that has never been done in the, I don't know, how long have I been here, fourteen some odd years? Until, until recently, when Mr. Ferguson revamped the road program. So I have to say, I, I disagree with some people, and I have to say that our road program is far superior to some others. When I drive through Salisbury Township, when I drive through Doylestown Township, when I even go over into Jersey and drive through Hamilton Township, boy, it's like being on a roller coaster. And, you know, so I don't think we should take their road program for granted. In regards to public works, I believe public works has been probably shorthanded for the last ten years when a prior budget, a prior administration in their budget decided a way to save money was to lay off public works people. Well, that was never recouped, just like some, some other things like selling assets for five hundred thousand dollars, never recouped. So, I mean, every budget has a history that maybe we all should learn about. Now, no one's happy with raising taxes, but if we don't, what is gonna happen to this township? And I, I just have a few questions, and if you don't have the particular numbers, that's fine, we could come back to it. But what percentage of our budget is personnel?
Roughly about seventy, about seventy percent is salary, benefits, healthcare, stuff like that.
Okay. What is the largest personnel budget item?
The police department.
Police department, okay. Now, we've had some people come up to that podium and say, oh, you gotta cut, 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 cut. Well, if there were to be cuts to the budget, what's the highest cuts in personnel? Police, firemen, public works, and how many of those cuts would make up the revenue we need?
I would say the, the highest paid step-one employee is, in a police officer. And it depends on how much your money you're trying to make up as to how, the quantity that would need to be reduced.
Okay, so it could be a substantial amount.
Correct.
I mean, we could, we could be talking about five police officers.
That's correct.
Or three police officers, two firemen. And where would that put our, our, our public safety and the quality of life?
Exactly.
What situation would that be in?
Not good.
Mr. Fisher was saying about single-digit response. We may have single-day response if that were the case. Now, i- if the township were not to approve a responsible way to raise revenues, you had mentioned this would also affect our Moody's ratings as they would decrease. Wouldn't this put us in a difficult situation if we had to borrow money? That if, if we were to find someone to give us the money, it would be at a very high rate?
Yes. I don't even think you could get a bank to loan you the money if you didn't have any way to repay it.
Got you. Now, now we were just talking about applying for the, the fire, fire grant to assist the fire department in funding. If that was to go through, how much would it be and for how long would that, that last?
The grant was for over a million dollars, and it was for the salary, salary and benefit? For, for the firefighters for a period of three years. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn, but it was, the first two years was zero reimbursement or matching funds?
It was matching fund, seven-five, seventy-five, first year and then administrative.
Right.
And then, these are just hypotheticals, it's nothing, I don't want to scare anybody out there. But if, if we were to cut any of the police resources or not add additional resources, what kind of detriment would that be to the township? And will we have any loss of additional revenue?
Well, the, I mean, initially, obviously, if you did the less number of officers you have to respond, it can significantly impact the operation, and it can also impact your insurance rating. Your insurance rating can go up, it can affect their accreditation, which in turn may affect any future contracts you may have with neighboring municipalities to expand. It can also affect officer and public safety. I mean, if you have one officer responding to a scene and you have no supervisor, you could end up theoretically with a situation like you had with Mr. George Floyd.
Again, hypothetically, if we were to eliminate the paid fire department, would there even be enough volunteer firefighters to safely cover the Newtown area?
I think the short answer to that is no. I think the fact that the, the NFA is now reaching out to Chief Forsyth to be their chief for the township's help in recruiting and retention and volunteers, and also openly admitting that, that they don't think that they have the staffing, the four guys to, to respond on the weekends and off hours, I think is a clear indication that there's deficiencies.
Okay. So to go back to this, this particular chart, we're actually one of the fortunate ones that have a paid fire, fire force. Since losing Lockheed's Martin's EIT of over seven hundred thousand, and actually some other townships in the surrounding area, maybe to the total of a million if you want to round it off, what would the monetary effect be if a large neighboring township, say like Lower Makefield, were to enact an EIT? And what would it take to recoup those losses?
Well, if, if not when, or actually, I think the question is when, not if, any of these other townships surrounding us enact an EIT, I mean, I, I believe the number from Lower Makefield is about four hundred thousand dollars, so you're looking at about a mil and a quarter increase just to recuperate that loss.
So we'd be down one point four million just in EIT losses?
Correct.
Okay. Now, we have two possible housing developments currently going, hopefully going up with over a hundred homes combined. At an average of, say, seven hundred thousand dollars per home, what would the transfer At an average of, say, seven hundred thousand dollars per home, what would the transfer tax be to the township? And, and you've said the transfer tax right now is pretty slim.
Well, it's, it's, fortunately, this year it's on track. I can't really say for next year. Hopefully, the trend continues where, where real estate doesn't stay on the market for very long, it, everything is selling in record time and above asking price, so. But if, if those hundred homes were developed, that would translate to roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars if they were seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand-dollar houses. And obviously, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars wouldn't be in one lump sum payment in one year, it would be spread out over, you know, however long it takes for the development to come up out of the ground, and as they sell units, that transfer tax would be distributed to the municipality.
Right.
And the school district.
Now, also on these, these homes that are, you know, maybe one day built, if the average of these homes were to be, the average income of these homes were to be at least a hundred and seventy-five thousand per household, what kind of resident EIT tax would we be collecting per year? Well, I mean, roughly, I mean, I don't.
Roughly, I mean, roughly speaking, that number would be about ninety thousand a year.
Okay.
Half of it, you gotta keep in mind, half of it goes to the school district, half of it stays with the municipality.
Got you. In, in your opinion, if we were to do nothing, just nothing, what would happen to this township?
Well, the short answer, I mean, your fund balance forward number under the manager's budget is proposed to be about a little over two, two million dollars. Two million seventy-two thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. So, if you take out the millage associated with the increase to the general fund, that eight and a half mils, which is, equates to two million nine hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, you're in negative territory, and we would be looking at significant financial shortfalls by the end of this year.
Which could negatively impact this, this township. Some people sitting out there with these seven hundred thousand dollars homes wouldn't be worth seven hundred thousand dollars anymore. So, I, I, I know this is a heavy-duty budget this year, and it's always, the, the talk of increasing taxes has always been a dirty word, but, but I, I kind of look at it in a different way, I kind of look at it as an investment in your community. And i, if you're willing to invest that money to maintain your services, your quality of life, then, I, I guess you have to ask, ask the question of yourself, is it something you're willing to do? Now, I know we're going to analyze this budget, we're going to talk about it at every, every meeting, and we sharpen our pencils to see what we can do in regards to revenues and maybe cutting expenses, but, you know, it seems like, I think that as far as maybe scaring the residents out there in regards to a tax increase, maybe they should be scared in regards to if it's not done, and what this community could, what could happen to this community. Every community surrounding us has raised taxes, I know Northampton has raised it for the last few years. I think last year, Lower, uh, Lower Makefield raised taxes. I think they may even be raising it again this year. And so, I mean, it, it, it's the sign of the times. So, I appreciate what you've done, I know it's, it's a, it's a hard thing to do, and it's a hard thing to say, you're proposing a, a budget with taxes, but again, if, if we all come up with some sort of solutions, a little bit from each one of us, maybe we could salvage something from, from this budget. I have nothing else to say, I know we're going to be discussing it further at every meeting, hopefully, we come with some questions, and, you know, everybody think outside the box and see what we can come up with.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Absolutely.
Sorry, Dennis, did you want to go first?
Oh, you can go.
I'm sorry. I want to get back to specifics, right, and the hypotheticals, and on the page, first page of the general fund, in the budget where the numbers are, on the revenues, I'm not understanding of the item on the realis, real property taxes, real estate taxes current, there are no numbers for 2019 and 2020, it looks like you have two hundred and ninety-five thousand, and then in 2021, it's two million nine hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, is there some numbers missing here that I'm not getting?
No, there was, there was never any millage allocated.
I see, I see.
Right. So, this year, that two hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and eight, eighty-six dollars under 2020 year-to-date, that's the mil that we've reallocated from the debt service fund to the general fund to try to offset those.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. My question is, where do we proceed from here? And I know that once we, you know, do a preliminary budget, and that's, you know, weeks away, where we can make some changes to preliminary budget, I think there's some things about line items and categories, and could you, could you give us an idea how that works?
Yes. Once a preliminary budget is adopted, the bottom line cannot change more than ten percent or twenty-five percent in any major category, major categories identified as finance, for example, or, or public works or police. So, there's limits on, on the adjustment ratios within, within the budget, once it's, once it's preliminarily adopted. I think I got those percentages right. So, it's, it, yes, ten percent, it can't be off by more than ten percent of the bottom line or twenty-five percent in each major category without the requirement for re-advertising.
And that's good to know, too, it's the caveat about.
Is there a percentage of increase and decrease?
I, I believe it's ten, ten, ten percent in any major category, if I recall it, up and down.
Up and down?
Yeah.
Up and down? Got you. Okay.
Thank you.
I guess we still have the rest of the meeting going through here.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I make a comment?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Thank you. I just, obviously, this being my first year on the board, and going through this with this great body of men here, I just wanted to, while these are going to be really tough decisions, I want to share that, let's make sure that we're not, we're working together on this rather than against each other. I want to make sure that we all recognize that there's ways that we can go about discussing this without creating a bigger issue, and let's make sure that we do it in a way where our township is behind us and not providing them with more, like, opportunity for concern when they know that they should be confident in the public officials they have. Thank you.
Very nice, but you're right, this is your first year on the board doing a budget, you've never seen this.
Mr. Chairman, it's felt like three years, but, yes. I, I did get this role in the end of January, so.
Excellent.
Wow.
Okay. Any, any new business to discuss? Any old business to discuss?
I would just re-announce that, I think there's a, something on the township website, Mr. Manager, about the October thirty-first Financial Town Hall.
Yes, that's right.
It'll be held, the plans are to hold it in this meeting unless it overgrows this meeting, or this meeting space, so.
And just as a, a warning, that Verizon is not carrying our channel.
No, Verizon is down, and it's on their end, they're aware of it, and hopefully, they get it back up and running soon.
Okay.
And I would just add that the timeframe for that is nine-thirty to eleven in the morning, so we'll have time to do trick-or-treating in the afternoon.
Okay, excellent. Any, any public comment?
Well, I would just mention that we did receive a lot of public comment by email, I don't think we want to read all this, but can I suggest that these be appended to the minutes, are we giving minutes to this?
Sure, absolutely. And we all have copies of those, so we could, we could read them.
I'm not sure if those were meant to be public comment at the meeting, or if they were just submitted to that email address.
When people submit comments to comments@newtownpa.gov, I'm assuming that's a public comment submitted to the township, right?
We can, but.
If you have copies, just give it to Mary, and she could.
Well, you have the electronic PDF files you can give to Mary and put on there, most of them have come from the people in the Lancy Court, I believe.
Yep.
Those, that's the retirement community, fixed income.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other retirement communities in our township?
Yes.
Okay.
I think Liberty, Liberty Place, I believe.
Villas of Newtown, Liberty.
Villas of Newtown.
I didn't, I didn't see public comment from those folks yet, did, did any of you get any comment from those?
No, not from them, no.
All right. Just, just the Lancy Court?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else have any public comment they want to come up and say their piece? Okay, seeing none, I guess without objection, motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to adjourn?
So, move.
All right. Okay, everybody go on.